Okay, folks, as is our custom, we'll open the meeting. Even though the antique wall clock says a few minutes of it, really is seven and 7:00 PM real time on the east coast. So if we could all rise and pledge the flag to open the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks for all coming tonight. Looks like we have a larger crowd than normal. We do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM, which we will jump into in a second. A few things first, I usually like to open a meeting, kind of a friendly welcome, and then a little initial business we do at every meeting. One is, just so the board can look at the minutes that have been circulated, and I thought we'd repeat what's gone around. It looks like there are two sets of minutes to approve. I've been through them, and they've been circulated digitally. Let me just find the exact dates. One was our actual January meeting, January 13th, the full board meeting, and then the workshop of January 16th. As I mentioned, they've been circulated. Were there any other additions, alterations, or corrections?
Just a question, on the January 16th minutes, are we going to fill in those blanks that follow the resolution was offered? This is for the resolution 32020, for the record, or is that...
I think what you're looking at, the actual resolution, I don't know if the audience could hear his whole question, I had trouble, but we have the text of the resolution here. What blanks are you talking about? Can you see what he's looking at?
Yeah, it just doesn't say second.
Yeah, what Brent is looking at is the proposal the board looked at at the last meeting, and that was in the minutes. The resolution was passed, and that is stated in this document. We could clean that up for you, though. In Cindy's resolution book is the actual resolution with the motion made by, seconded by, and the vote. So that does exist. We could carry that.
Okay.
How about we replace this text with the actual resolution book? I would say that's a good move.
Yep. That's really the comment I had.
Okay. Any other thoughts? That being said, I move that we accept and approve those minutes with that exception and correction that Brent brought up. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. While we're on the minutes, we did learn today that one of our village residents, Joe Giuseppewitz Senior, passed away in the past day or two. He lived over in Red Hook Estates, and we used to knock on his door once or twice a year, and he'd pop in once or twice a year. But he was senior, meaning up in years, and we don't know too much about what happened to him, but he did pass away. As is our custom, we usually put in our village minutes a blank page for residents that passed away in the month between meetings. So I would say we should follow that custom and ask that we leave a blank page in honor and memory of Joe Giuseppewitz Senior. Is there a second?
Second.
And we did hear, too, she was not a village resident, to my knowledge, at any point. Well, I lived in the village, but...
Oh, yeah, she was Red Hook Estates.
And when was that, though? Back in the... Well, we're talking about Nikki Weaver. She also passed away. She was active in Rotary and...
She's on the zoning Board of Appeals here in the village.
Which year, like the 70s or 80s?
When I was...
90s, I was there.
Yeah, 93 through...
Yeah, because when I first met her, she lived up in the town of Red Hook, somewhere up...
She was our co-chair.
But she was always active with us in celebrations early on, I think through the Rotary. So she was a village resident at some point, and even though when she passed, she was not. But we know she was ill for a while with different things, but she did retire from working on a lot of her civic projects with us. But again, I'd like to put a second page in her memory and honor. In favor?
Aye.
All right, that's that part of it. As far as the public hearing itself, we have certain customs, some that are here routinely will know them, but there was a sign-in sheet, which I introduced, and I think most of the people over there saw that. What I thought we'd do is, it's noticed for 7:00 PM, and usually we like to read the subject of the public hearing out loud, which we will do. It is out in front on some desks with some maps and so forth as well. A few people I've met already who've come in and talked to us about it, some I haven't spoken to yet, some have been here at other meetings as this progressed through things. But I thought I'd give a general statement first, and then we'll get to specifics. What we do have here in the village is the great luck and success of having on our board folks that have gone to the Pace University Law School land use seminars and training. And what we did here in the village, we like to develop and grow our own versions of zoning code with input and output from professionals. But in our situation, we created a zoning review committee about, I'd say, 18 to 20 months ago to start looking at the general business district and growth in general in the village. I think I hear him whispering, "that long ago," but that was on the early stages of one phase of the project. But like I said, we view zoning as something we have to modernize and keep current, and what I'll explain in a few minutes, if you look at the map on the wall, this is the map that's in our current zoning book, and this is on E-code. Folks could look it up, and it's also printed out there for you. But we have a combination of residential districts. R-20 means you have to have a 20,000 square foot lot. R-10 is a 10,000 square foot lot. Our village business center is a general business district, and then we have a bit of a highway business district out east on 199. We have our most modern district, which is NMU Neighborhood Mixed Use, which we'll explain a little bit as we go. And LIB is a light industrial business. That's where the chocolate factory sits. It's pretty much a unique zone unto itself there. If one looks around, some of the members on this board have come from, and I'll identify them for us in a minute, but helped develop the NMU zone, maybe, what, 15 years ago, plus or minus? And then when one looks at what's happening in the village and where we're trending, that's one of the tasks we're faced with. Okay, how do we help things develop in a sustainable fashion and in a positive fashion? One of our older zones is this highway business district. I think if we go to the pages in our codebook, it's 72 or 76, the last time it was touched, which is, let's call it 1980. Pardon me?
Let's go.
Yeah, it's 40, 40, 40, let's see, 1980, and now it's 40 years plus ago. By the way, what I was saying is, in our formation of the ZRC, we took two sitting board members, Brent Kowalczek and Jay Trapp. Brent has a professional background in architecture, Jay's an engineer, and we have somebody from our planning board that formed the three-person zoning review committee for us. They were tasked with looking at components of our zoning law and working with the village board to suggest future changes, potential changes, upgrades, and so forth. What they've come out of committee is what we're going to be talking about tonight, and as is our custom, anything we do like this, we have a public hearing for a number of reasons. One is, we need by law to do it, and then B, we want public comment. So the way to get that is through this formal public hearing. I mentioned the Pace University School of Law. You know, we're very lucky and proud that both Jay and Brent attended that, and they brought a lot of that. It's a high, high level, both legal and future-looking training seminar they've been to, and it's not just a course or two, it's a long, detailed study they went through, and we're lucky to have them with that. In the world of public hearings, it can be a little strange, isn't it? We listen to the public, we don't have to comment, we don't have to get into back-and-forth dialogue, but we'll see what comes up. I do also like to use them to answer questions, you know, to do things. But to be, the formal part of it, Jay, if you would be so kind to read two things in your custom down there, the heading on the sign-in sheet, and then when you get a break, could you read the actual law itself? It's not that long, folks, so it won't be too tedious.
The law itself...
You hear that?
Is that it right there? I'll start with this part here first. We have a few rules that we like to, just to get out of the way, just public yesum? Anything? Oh, okay. Just to kind of, a little bit of housekeeping here. Persons desiring to speak during the public hearing, please sign up. Ed mentioned that, so I have three names here. When recognized by the mayor, persons speaking will be invited to state their name and addresses, unless otherwise determined by the mayor. The time to be allotted to each speaker is three minutes. Once all persons wishing to speak have spoken once, any person wishing to speak a second time may do so for a maximum of two minutes. Comments must pertain to the subject of the public hearing. You know, we don't want it to go wandering around, we want to stay kind of focused on this. Now, in terms of decorum, no member of the public is permitted to speak during the public hearing unless you get recognized by the mayor, and all comments should be addressed to the mayor. This is not a debate, and you don't turn around and talk to the audience, so it's to us. We're listening to you, we will record everything that you say, and we'll take it down, we'll take it into consideration. All persons speaking will be given respect and courtesy, and in return are expected to be respectful and courteous. No profane, no slanderous, no inappropriate language, boisterous conduct is acceptable. And so, that's the easy part. Local law, let's see. This local law amends the village zoning map to eliminate the highway business district and extend the general business and neighborhood mixed-use districts along portions of South Broadway and East Market Street. The text of the zoning law is amended to allow pre-existing single-family, two-family, multifamily homes to continue as permitted uses in the general business district. The expansion of the commercial district is consistent with existing pattern of growth and with future expansion areas based on the proposed locations of Phase 1 of the municipal sewer project. The expansion of the general business and neighborhood mixed-use districts will increase the highest and best uses of the included properties and maintain the historic small urban scale and traditional development patterns of the village. Section 2, the zoning map attached to the zoning law as 200 Attachment 2, last revised September 12, 2016, and any subsequent zoning maps adopted by the Village of Red Hook are hereby deleted and replaced with the new zoning map entitled. Zoning map of the Village of Red Hook dated, and whatever date that may be when we get to that point, as attached here to as Exhibit 8. Section 3, Section 200-2 of the zoning law entitled Establishment of Districts is hereby amended to delete the reference to highway business districts, so that it reads as follows: For the purpose of this chapter, the Village of Red Hook is hereby divided into the following five classes of districts. Residential 20,000, which is R-20,000 or R-20. Residential 10,000, R-10,000. General Business is GB. Did it pop up there?
I'm sorry.
Neighborhood Mixed Use, NMU, and Light Industrial Business, LIB. Section 4, Section 200-10 Parenthetic B, the zoning law entitled General Business District is hereby amended to include new subsection 13, to renumber existing subsection 13 and all subsections thereafter accordingly, to read as follows. 13, dwellings, one-family, two-family, multifamily legally in existence as of December 31, 2019, and which have not been thereafter converted to another permitted use. Such dwellings may be altered, improved, and modified in accordance with the R-10,000 Bulk Regulations. Section 5, which is 200-11 of the zoning law, Highway Business is hereby deleted and reserved for future use. Section 6, Subsection A of Section 200-16 of the zoning law, Site Plan Approval is hereby amended to delete the reference to Highway Business District, so that it reads as follows. Requirements: Site Plan Approval by the Planning Board is required for all uses permitted in Section 200-10 General Business District Parenthetic GB and 200-12 Neighborhood Use Parenthetic NMU, except for one- and two-family dwellings before issuance of a building permit for any external change in the aforementioned districts, including signage, up to two EV charging stations, and one- and two-family dwellings for all special permitted uses and for alteration and changes of non-conforming uses and structures as provided for by Article 6. Section 7, Separability. For any part of the provision of this law or application thereof to any person or circumstance be adjudged invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such judgment shall be confined to its operation, to the part of the provision or application directly involved in the controversy in which judgment shall have been rendered, and shall not affect or impair the validity of the remainder of the local law or the application thereof to other persons or circumstances. And the Village of Red Hook hereby declares that it would have passed this local law or the remained thereof had such invalid application or invalid provision been apparent. Section 8, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing in the Office of the Secretary of State in accordance with Section 27 of the Municipal Home Rule Law.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
So that was two pages of reading, and like I said, it is out. If anybody didn't pick one up, or we can make more copies if somebody needs it. We technically haven't opened it, this is a little introductory still, but if one looks at the current zoning map, like I said, I pointed out, I don't know if everybody can see it, but the highway business is over here, the GB, the R-10 is in the middle of a gap between the general business and highway business, and then NMU is down here, and you'll see the proposed map that's the subject of this law, and the text in the law is changing the NMU to come up South Broadway and take in the general business district out east on East Market, and eradicating the highway business district to make it all general business, but with protections for anybody in this R-10,000 area. And then on top of that, what we did, the rules require us to notice public hearings, which we do find are difficult, because we're not always sure who actually reads the back of the newspaper to see what's happening. So we, in this case, made special letters of advice to people in the affected areas, which is a good thing. Anyway, with that being said, let's open the public hearing. What that means is, we state that, and we try to be collegial, like we said, and if somebody has a question, we'd rather get the question answered than prolong a misinterpretation. So that's one of my personal perspectives, instead of letting something simmer. But anyway, I think somewhere there's a list of who signed up, is that moving around? So I would say we, here at 7:15 or so, open the public hearing on a local law to amend the official zoning map of the Village of Red Hook and make other associated changes. I move we open it. Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
So we're underway. So first on the list, we have Chris Stelling from Mill Road, Red Hook. Chris, if you wouldn't mind going to the lectern and...
Okay, Chris Stelling from Mill Road. My big concern is, for those of us who are now in the highway business zone, what happens to us?
Okay, listed as a concern. Let me ask, Panda Lady, do you think, with a mic? Hey, Jay, could you hand Chris a mic?
Yeah.
We're going to take two, because what happens is, those in the room could hear you, but Panda TV might not have.
Okay.
So if you could say who you are again.
So I read the zoning law you went over. The big omission is, what happens to the existing highway business owners? There doesn't seem to be any, you know, way of us knowing what happens now.
Well, the essence of the map would be, what is highway business would become general business district. And we, as I said, I think it might be to everybody's benefit if we answered that for the folks without getting too detailed. Chris came in during the week, maybe a week ago, whatever, and we pulled out the highway business district allowable, permitted uses, special permitted uses, and then looked at GBD, that's code for general business district, same thing, permitted, special permitted, and excluded. I asked that he weigh them, I don't know if, because you had some things you might think you wanted to do.
My question is simple. I'm using the highway business property as a highway business business.
Right.
Do I lose that business? Does it continue as a pre-existing business as the law was amended for the multifamilies as pre-existing? So will an amendment be put in the new proposed law to let folks who have a highway business presently continue with that business as a pre-existing use?
Well, I can answer on the first part.
Or do we lose that?
If you could just refresh, I remember, right now, you're a commercial plumber, residential plumber, commercial plumber.
Section 9.
And then...
Section C.
You do, you were trying to open a deli there, we were working with you on that, and then you do some small engine repair in the back, and the things you brought up in our face-to-face meeting, looking at things, they seemed they would be totally allowable in GBD.
Do we get a guarantee of that? I mean...
Well, you'd have to, I mean, I would defer to some of my colleagues on...
You know, amending the zoning is great, but eliminating an entire zone, you know, class of zoning is more than an amendment, it's an annihilation, you know? It's not a tweak, so I'm not clear on what...
Brent's getting ready to talk, but like I said, we're trying to help you weigh the different categories of allowable now.
I mean, I don't mind having highway business, but I don't want to lose, I mean, I don't mind having the general business extend to wherever, but I think folks who are currently using the highway business zone for the permitted uses of the highway business zone shouldn't lose that ability. That should be protected as a pre-existing use.
So right now, the parts of the R-10,000 highway business are being proposed to be rolled into the highway business, or to the general business district, with all the permitted uses, special permitted, and accessory uses of the general business zone itself?
So all the uses of the highway business will be continued?
Not all, some of them right now, but we haven't, go ahead.
You want me to jump in?
Yeah.
So as a general rule, when you...
Maybe Victoria's counsel to the village on land use, so...
When the zoning is changed, a legal pre-existing use can continue as a legal pre-existing use, even if the zoning changes, but it only does continue in conformance with the section of law called, I think it's called pre-existing uses. There's a section in the zoning. So there are certain limits, you can't, you know, you can't build a whole other structure for that same use anymore. You get to continue as it is.
Okay.
It's a general rule. I mean, I don't know the specifics of your property, so we can make an appointment to talk more specifically about an impact on a particular business, but the general rule is when zoning changes, if you are a legal use, then you get to continue as I...
If I sell the property, does that use, as I'm using it, continue with the new owner?
It regulates the use and not the user, so as long as it's not a bad use.
Okay.
How long can it be, D4?
Six months.
Six months.
And Victoria, is part of that allowed non-conforming use, or pre-existing non-conforming use? You can expand it up to 50% or that, that's not where that rule applies?
That, I think you're thinking of the town zoning law.
Okay.
I think in the village...
A bit more restrictive.
It is more restrictive.
Okay.
I don't really recall off the top of my head, but I don't think it's...
And that was amended, I don't know, maybe a year ago, non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures?
Okay.
So if you go to general code, there's a whole section on non-conforming uses, and you can take a look at it.
Well, right now, I'm presently conforming use.
But if you want to understand what regulations would be, should you become non-conforming, that would be the section.
And you could continue with the use, and then if you sell the property, the new owner could continue that use. If you were to abandon, like, it would sit empty for longer than six months, and that use has to conform with the, all the uses in the general business district.
Now, what's the reasoning for eliminating the highway business? I can see expanding the general business, but why eliminate the highway business? What's the upside?
Some of the characteristics, as described in the highway business district, are more apt for suburban strip development, so they call for bigger, bigger structures, but set back about 80 feet from the road to prohibit, or to allow parking in front of the building. So what we're doing is trying to continue the traditional development patterns of the village, especially in the general business district. Bring them up close, so we can put parking behind the structures, make it more pedestrian, accessible. Speed limit's 30 miles an hour, and there's sidewalks all the way out there, so it's, we're trying to appeal more to the pedestrian at that point, and make it more consistent with the general business district as a walkable commercial area that fits within the traditional development patterns of the Village of Red Hook.
Okay.
You know, Chris, when you were in, to me, that, just to put it into like more of an illustration than Brent said in words, is like whatever was built out by Mylan, by the Teconic Interchange, where you have gas station with pumps out front and Dunkin' Donuts, and vacant space, and huge parking lot, that's a typical highway business district use, which we just don't feel is compatible with the village center. But looking at it, and...
I mean, but are there any lots now that would be able to handle?
Yeah.
Maybe one or two out there.
Yeah.
And what we did, like, it's not a full recognition, but when the IGA became the CVS, we had them push parking to the back, some on the side, there was an attempt to make it look more like the village center architecturally, because CVS would come in in the old days. If it was an HBD, they could have put what I used to call the Alamo, you know, they'd build these big 40-foot-tall facades with, you know, but they made it look like a village. And that's what we're trying to do, and that's the nature of zoning, which we're trying to make the village look good going for the next 45 years. By the way, we gave you way more time than three minutes, but it's because he probably asked a lot of questions that other people had, so he used up some of other people's time. And just so, Charlie used to be on the town of Red Hook Planning Board, so he's got a planning background, too, so...
Easily confused.
He was thinking that, a little different category there. On our list, we had next Jennifer Fear, who we know from the village thing.
Microphone? Ah, there you go. So, Section 13 that you read off indicates that the R-10,000 can remain as R-10,000, but if I wanted to change the use on R-10,000, I could come in for a special permit for the planning department to approve. Is that correct?
Depends what your use change is.
Well, so long as I'm, my use is compatible with general business district, which I haven't looked up, I don't know what all the uses are for that yet.
Well, if you change from residential to commercial...
Yes.
The chances are, you probably will not be able to change back to residential.
I see.
So then...
And if I did a mixed use?
Mixed use would be probably more in lines with what we're doing in general business district anyway, so you would, should be as a right at that point.
Okay. Are there tax ramifications to the change from R-10 to general business?
That I couldn't answer, but...
Nothing, nothing built in, I mean, nothing in the law or anything.
Okay. Because obviously, you're upzoning me.
Giving you more options, you mean? Yeah, yeah.
Potentially, I could get taxed more, okay. Will this affect setbacks as well? What are the legal setbacks? I'll have to comply to the general business district, no longer to the R-10,000.
Only for you.
I see.
If you stay a resident, you can expand under the R-10,000 regulations.
Okay.
If you're putting on a one-bedroom addition or something like that.
Right.
If you are changing to a restaurant and you're putting an addition on, now you have to follow the general business.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not, we're currently going through some of the provisions in the general business district, tightening it up a little bit.
Okay. So when will those be available for review?
We're not done yet, but it's basically what, the setback is a zero setback in general business district, but the provision that will probably, we're entertaining at this point, is to, I mean, this is still in its infancy, but we're trying to, if there's a pre-established, built-to line on the street, we're trying to maintain that integrity of that. So we want to maintain the character that's already there.
Okay.
You know, so that would probably be the way we would go, as far as continuing the setback that you have, seems to be pretty much in line with your neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
And that's something we would like, and the scale and everything else, so...
Okay, that's something, that's why I moved into the village, so there's no problem.
But just while you're still up, Brent had mentioned in passing bulk coverage, in GBD there's a higher bulk coverage percentage, right? And that, I don't think you guys...
Yeah, 65%.
65%. So that affects part of what you're talking about.
It's an FAR of 65%? Or it's impermeable coverage?
Lot coverage.
That's including structures.
Okay.
But check that.
And impermeable surfaces?
I'm not sure.
It just says, by building area, whatever building area.
Building, yeah.
Okay.
But...
And when you submit... And when you submit, I'm sorry, I'll speak louder.
Oh.
But when you submit on the new zoning, will you have all of the uses and setbacks finalized?
Yeah, right now, we're just, right now, the.
No, the law right now.
It is the law right now. Right, and so, right, right now, we're not, we're only voting on, on the change in the map, so anything that's in the general business district at this point.
Okay.
Is what is the law.
Okay, now, I should just look under that online.
Sure.
Thank you, your honor.
You bet.
Thank you. The third person signed up is Mr. Vincent Zitz. Jay, you want to give him a microphone, so.
Yeah.
Are you going to?
I'm Vincent Zitz, and I run the service station east of Red Hook. I really don't see why we need to change that zoning, I mean, I'm not in the general business district, I think that should be between Grave Street and Elizabeth Street on the east end, and we can go into the other streets, whatever. I mean, I'm highway business, that's, we're not part of the general district, and I really don't see why we need to change it. I mean, you were talking about making certain things accessible pedestrian, um, there was a business next door to me, it was like a jewelry shop and gift shop and that, and it basically went under because nobody is going to be walking that far out from the, the center of the village, um, so I don't know why we would change that. I think we should just leave it, um, because we are highway business, I mean, obviously, our business is cars and that's highway. So, that's my thought on it.
Just so we know, this, this, how many lots are you here, are you this one I'm pointing to you right there, and then behind there, is that you? Can you see the map there, Vin? Is this your business, and then these are you back here? Here's the big corner, here's Baxter Fisk, yeah.
Well, that, yeah, that would be mine, and the next would be.
This is your neighbor, and the community center's here.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, you own these two back ones too?
No.
No, just the front?
Just the front is the, is the business.
Okay.
And the back is.
And then Chris is right next to you there, right?
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you, Vin.
That is my thought on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have the new map?
Um, let me put it up. I do.
So, in fact, the flag lot that you see is Chris's. You see, it's divided into two, and there's a little flag lot. That's the one. That's Chris's lot.
Yeah.
So, if he's got the frontage, you know, that's required, it is.
We do, Brent, have the new map printed out front, and it should be, it's in your package too, it's labeled draft, you'll see, folks in the audience.
I mean, one of the things we.
As a highway business, you go past Baxter, what's out beyond Baxter, River Bordo out there, Lee?
No, they're in the town.
Villages.
They're in the town, so we go the next, the next properties east of Baxter. And then in, just to make a point too, the neighborhood mixed-use zone, um, we're actually extending that currently, they're coming from the general business district to where we have the NMU, we're actually adding five additional properties going south. Um, like, the last one would be Migliorelli's, Griff's Deli, and then three properties to the north, and then one property off of Fifth Street where Hobson's Windows used to be, that's going to be also included in the NMU, so that's the proposal there.
Yeah, what Brent was pointing out, the questions from the audience were all on the highway business aspect, and one from the, from the R-10,000 property owner, but there's some people out there that are interested in the NMU, so that's what he was just talking about. And I'm trying to, let's see, I might need to go to a paper map myself, but if you want to research that, Brent.
Did you get a paper map?
Pardon me?
Did you get a, a paper map with the new map?
Yes. What's allowable with NMU as opposed to GBD?
You have to hire your own professional design person for that.
There, there's.
It's a, you, but we, we should follow rules of decorum, you want to come up and ask a question and say who you are? Okay, okay.
It, it's mixed use, and it's a little bit more, um, context-sensitive, so we're trying to encourage more mixed use, which is residential and business, primarily resi, retail is what we're after. There's a size limitation on there, again, we try to adhere to the existing built-to-lines to conform to the neighborhood, scale is very important for us, so the maximum size of a building is 2,000 square feet, um, but you can expand that if you have one form of 2,000 square feet connected, you can have two 2,000-square-foot forms connected by a, what we call a 500-square-foot hyphen, then you can go up on that too, so we're trying to keep the scale similar to what a neighborhood would be like. For instance, the, where the archery place is, that's 3,000 square feet, so the little smaller, a good example of what we're talking about would be Knollwood Commons, so in the front, there's two buildings that are basically 2,000-square-foot forms connected by a 500-square-foot hyphen, so you can see what that looks like, and it seems to be compatible with the residential, and that was the intention of that zone, so that'll roll over to that, the new designation of our NMU on those properties.
And I did, now, this is the digital projection version of the paper map of the revised in line with where NMU is changing, so it's the brighter teal kind of bluish here, so it did reside over here in Outfire House Lane, and it was in some of the south area here, where Brent mentioned Knollwood Commons, and don't be scared by the 2,000-foot, square-foot limit, because you can, architecturally with design techniques, make that a 2,000-foot components of buildings. But it is logical in the sense that the town has passed the traditional neighborhood design concept for Broadway outside of the village, and NMU, in my mind, is the most logical blend to bring it into the village center. So essentially, we're bringing it up through the churches, through where Migliorelli's farm stand is and Griff's Deli, up that area, which is already a mixed use, um, and we're matching it up to closer into the four corners right there, so.
So, those properties will gain additional uses for the properties, and again, that is where our sewer is running, so, you know, with the added cost of a sewer comes additional property uses that you, when one can have, so.
But that's the news on the public hearing, um, we had three people sign up, a few comments, more from the audience, some repeats, anybody else before we move on? What I thought we'd do, board as a unit here, just discuss, I think we can close the public hearing, but keep like open a 21-day period for written comment, um, and then, um, we take your comments seriously, we're not going to vote on this tonight, we're going to put forward, you know, we'll, the, the ZRC will take into comment, this board will take into comment consideration, uh, and then work on it, but the public hearing part will be over, so, um, if anybody else has anything to say, we will do, I would ask that we close the formal public hearing with the window for folks to have 21 days from tonight to send any written questions, comments in following. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts?
We need to date March 2nd, close the business March 2nd.
That you're picking a date with your counter, give me 21 days.
The last three weeks of the year, today is the one.
Okay, so I'll be more legal, March 2nd, so.
And will you address it to you there?
I would say go to the clerk, please, and then she would circulate it to the board. I would call you up. We have a motion pending, but do you have a quick question?
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah?
So, the procedure now, just procedure-wise, the public hearing's going to close, and then you keep it open for 21 days?
For written comments.
Yeah.
Right.
Then we'll, we'll have a March meeting, which should be four weeks from tonight, so we're doing that on purpose, we'll have three weeks for written, we'll take, and then, um, odds are, we'll vote on it in four weeks, so it's.
So, then the vote will be.
Yeah, and quite frankly, the comments seem more generated toward just highway business and the R-10 side of the plan here versus the NMU, and I know some of you are more in the NMU world, but.
The board has to complete, so you'll start discussion in March, but you may not be voting on it till April or May.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Okay.
So, you're looking at April or May for this to become finalized, if there's no real objection.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, and we have a motion pending to close with that March 5th, 21-day written, is there, we have a second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, folks. You're welcome to stay for the rest of what we do, and, uh, but, um, we'll.
Thank you.
Why don't we take a two-minute break, and people can get water, and we'll go to our next set.
What are all these little dots? Let me ask you for.
I think they're numbers that you can't see.
I just can't see.
Look at night.
You used an even older basement for the new map.
Every time I go down and see my house, I go.
Look at the, the old zoning map, it shows the two new lots that were created on the west side of Mason, but the map that you used for the new one.
Yeah, I'm like, dude, we need some new carpets, we have to put countertops down.
Yeah, it's funny, I think I wrote back to you, and I was.
That's where I am.
Because when you pointed up, I was like, wow, how danger, can you wander into dangerous territory theoretically? And when do you change it? Right.
I think when, you know, when this is getting close to finalized, you should always have a good database map as you can.
Yeah, I have to ask, because.
Unless it's incredibly complicated, but it, it really shouldn't be, especially with access.
Because this one, he, you know, Jay probably went, because he said he had something on his computer.
It was probably very old.
So, this, because what he's trying to, must be a little fiscally conservative and not have to pay.
Are you still selling the place?
Should we run one out there? Put them there.
Yeah, it's, this, this widens a lot, there's a whole lot more.
Such a big crowd, it'll get us.
It's cool, and all that sort of stuff, so, you know.
That's what we're hoping for.
Yeah.
For what?
The sign.
There isn't one. The second one.
Well, you know, when we go, there's always.
Oh, the second one or the first one?
I will have a boat.
This one.
Okay, I thought you said the second one.
Oh, it's got the.
You say for a second.
I used to have a sailboat, it's a lot of work. I had a 16 Hovey.
Nope, nope.
Well, when I get ready to go, I might talk to you.
Take a look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, you will.
I'd do anything. For a price, maybe, but.
Take care, man, good to see you.
No, my daughter's, uh, right now.
I was, I was going to text you.
Oh, okay, oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, uh, my son called.
Oh, yes, what's his name?
Turner Bros.
Oh, sure.
Not, not as much, not as much, but, you know, refrigerator at work broke, so.
Oh, right. I need to design that for the guild of.
Yeah, I'd do without sugar anyway, but. There's limits, you know, it's all within limits.
So, I give up the planning board for this.
It does. So, you gotta be careful, right? That's, that's the moral of the story.
He makes us look good.
Words mean something, right?
Good question, man. We'll, we'll talk about it, yeah. When do you get deliveries, like, at night? Just weird, yeah. Well, I'll put it in my head, we'll ask.
Say, where are you from? I say, I have, Red Hook, and they go. Never work down there, I don't try and do anything down there.
All right, let's get our meeting going again, boys and girls, let's go.
Why building the city, so they're going to tell you this is nothing?
That's way tough.
How you doing?
Good, how are you doing, Brad?
We're going to get going, Brett.
City is slowing down a little bit, thinking of this. I mean, it's been so crazy down there.
Yeah.
Still, I've got projects now, I've got a project in Kingston, I've got a project in Accord.
Oh, okay.
Another one in Armagh, another one in Stanford.
So, you're all over the globe.
Okay, Brent, we should get going.
Thank you. Stop you seeing sometime.
Take care.
All right, let's see, looks like the hardcore stayed, and, um, we'll get back to our regular agenda here. We did have a second public hearing scheduled tonight for 7:15 PM, but I advised the board we would most likely postpone that, and we are, um, it was publicly noticed, but we're working on our senior water rate adjustments and our senior tax rate adjustments. We do offer for senior citizens over 65, based on an income categorization, different discounts in the assessed value of their property. We are consistent with section 467 of New York state law, but we're just trying to get it all tuned up, and our lawyers are still working on that, but the good part is, if folks are listening on Pandiff, the RH65, we do have a current existing tax deduction-type program, it reduces your village property taxes, but it is income-based, and essentially, the top number right now is if you make more than $32,400 a year, you don't qualify for this particular assessment reduction, and we were looking to make sure we're at the current most allowable limits, and we're comparing our rules to state rules, and the enabling authority comes from the state, section 467, we're still working on it, so we'll forego without even opening that public hearing, so. Uh, well, I'm not going to set another one, I have to talk with council in a day or two. Anyway, um, since we're, we did the minutes already, we will move to the financial world, and, um, Cindy has her report for us, would you like me to go over it? It's getting longer and longer, this report, with all the listing of reserve checking balances, but, um, right now, it shows account balances, general fund $173,186, water fund $139,436, trust and agency $19,437, petty cash, that's $70 type number, village green $4,149, hardscrabble $4,343, health insurance $4,064, sewer fund $30,260, and then I'll go over these quickly here, the reserve checking balances, these are those special funds we have created over the years to have a little surplus excess for emergencies, fire department, um, that's a capital-type contractual item we added a year or two ago, that has $5,013, police, that's a repair vehicle type amount, $14,527, the USDA, this is a big number, that's the short-term asset water reserve, $113,181, highway $20,705, snow reserve $3,269, tower reserve $17,699, unemployment $4,541, court reserve $3,296, and an office reserve $971. Expenses this month, our general fund $126,272.48, water fund $58,309, trust and agency $19,437, and sewer had no expenses. What we could talk about is, we did, um, if you, when you go through the vouchers, I think we did pay the employees' workers' comp this month, which was about $23,000, $24,000, that's where we share that, we're in the county pool, and then, um, we did pay the volunteer firemen's, that knew New York law, with the cancer coverage is my euphemism for the law, but, um, that was about, what was that, wasn't huge, but it was, yeah, $2,000 or $3,000, uh, they weren't killer, I mean, they weren't monstrous expenses, but, um, and then in general fund, those are the two bigger ones that I saw as I went through. I did go through the detailed report, and I've asked that you all do that too, here, at this point of the year, we're at 66% of our fiscal year, so I was going through and highlighting, highlighting to see who's within budget and who's without budget, and we'll have to lean on those that are running a little excess right now. We did, I did circulate some news that the controllers indicating that Dutchess County sales tax is up 5.7% last year, so, um, that'll help us a little bit, because we'll get, I think, two more payments this year for, from sales tax. We did submit our DASNY grant reimbursement, that was at $45,000, but they. We did submit our DASNY grant reimbursement. That was at forty-five thousand dollars, but they came back, our friend there gave a few edits corrections he would want. So we did exercise in line with that resolution to get the, the line of credit for the, um, forty-five thousand from Salisbury Bank. So that came in today. And then we'll reimburse, or we'll reimburse Salisbury when the grant payment comes through. Those are the big financial things going on. Is there any other thoughts about that?
I just have one more question. Um, we still haven't done a readjustment on the street maintenance, five-one-one zero point four-two and CHIPS, five-one-one zero point three. There were some expenses in the maintenance of street budget line that could be reduced or transferred over to the CHIPS line.
Which one were you, in this month's vouchers?
I think I'm, I tagged the, the, not specific voucher, but I did tag the spreadsheet.
I gave it to her.
Okay.
I didn't follow the spreadsheet versus the voucher, cause there was one voucher for dating materials that was water.
There was some work that we did, um, a couple of months ago on, on Market Street as far as catch basin repair that could be put into the CHIPS budget line and taken out of the street maintenance one to help that budget out a little bit. That budget line.
True, but I thought we did that. Did Cindy say we didn't yet?
No, we didn't.
Thursday, I'll talk to our controller and Cindy, because it seemed, I, I thought we, well, I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure we're moving that. It's just that we still spend the money, but we'll get reimbursed by CHIPS, so.
Right, so that'd be from?
So it'd be Cindy'd have to file it and what.
Right, whatever she does.
Very well, work on that. Okay, and that being done, what, uh, I would move that. I started moving, I think he started a question. CHIPS was, your one question, did you have a second one?
Nope, that was it.
I would move that we accept the Treasury report as submitted and read. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. And me still, looks like, uh, police report. Couple of things here. We have the typical monthly report in front of us for January twenty-twenty. Looking at it, incidents, four hundred and forty-eight. Breakout is three hundred fifty-two in the village, ninety in the town, six in Tivoli. Tickets written in the month were a hundred and seven. Ninety-one of those were in the village, includes four parking tickets, and sixteen were in the town. Arrests made were eight. Breakout is six in the village and two in the town. And later on tonight, we did get another contract from the school for the SRO program. They are following through with a little bit of increase in daily hours, which we've been giving them, so. That's in the new document. We'll get, I added that to our agenda later. I think it's a handwritten agenda came in after we circulated the printed agenda. The, uh, police car did come back and, um, it's back on the street and then the repairs were less than our deductible. So it was on. It's been on patrol again. Sounds good. Um, that's about all I can think of right now in the police world. As you can notice to my left, Jennifer Norris is not here tonight. She was a little under the weather, recovering and, um, I'll therefore probably switch to read her celebrations and, uh, materials management report while I'm reading away here. So in your packets, let's see, I highlighted, it's, uh, it looks like for the month, January garbage. Total tons was seven point five one tons and, um, recycling, that'd be a combination of the combing old cardboard and plastics and glass was two point nine tons. When I was doing the math, we're still hitting about a forty percent recycling rate, which is, I think, fine. We are, um, trending, if looking at tag sales, to thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars a year in tag sales. And, um, it's pretty much close to budget. We budgeted thirty-five thousand, as I recall, for that, that world. Even though we still struggle with a lot of people leaving and going to the private pickups, like I always say, if you add that, it's essentially ten and a half tons times two thousand pounds. You know, it's, it's a lot of waste we're pulling out of the village, so it's, even though the numbers don't look big when you quantify them as tons, it's still a lot of, a lot of mass and I still think we do a far better job pushing our people to recycle, so. Flipping over Jennifer's submission. She says, Red Hook Community Center will host a chili warm-up fundraiser on Saturday, February twenty-one. Warm up on a cold night and support the Red Hook Community Center. Twenty dollars a ticket. Choose a bowl, eat the chili, keep the bowl. I think I saw some promotional material where they're pretty nice, like almost hand-thrown ceramic bowls. Yeah, it says, featuring beautiful, one-of-a-kind handmade bowls created by local artisans. Only one hundred tickets will be sold. So walk on over and check it out on February twenty-first. Elmendorf will hold their annual soup night on Saturday, February twenty-ninth. For two bowls of soup, bread and salad, and music provided by Dan Budd and his graph, grass-fed bluegrass band. And Saturday, February twenty-ninth, it says ten o'clock. I don't see a time there, but I guess we could presume sometime around supper time. You could go, Historic Red Hook has a website, so you could go on their site and check that out. On our level, what we call our annual egg scramble will be held April fourth. This is the egg hunt that our PD and library and the village here put together each year over at the middle school. We get about five or six thousand eggs and filled with treats and candies and gift certificates and put them out. And they're gone in about less than five minutes, but, uh, it's a great fun day. It's April fourth and, um, details will be handed out soon, so Jen has not hashed out the exact start time, but we'll keep you posted. We have some time on that. Apple Blossom Day will be Saturday, May nine. This annual festival run by the Red Hook Rotary is the annual festival run by the Red Hook Rotary. Please contact them for more information on becoming a vendor. I'm not sure how you actually contact Red Hook Rotary, but it's, uh. And then our big showcase event, we, we had our first committee meeting of the year a couple of weeks ago. And we came up with the fact, we always do the third, third, third Saturday, rather, of September, which tends to keep us out of trouble with Porch Fest and different other nearby events. The problem this year is it's also synchronous with, uh, Rosh Hashanah. And we'd rather not, um, conflict with that, so we're moving ours to September twelfth. And this year, the summer ends September seventh with Labor Day as a late Labor Day, so it's gonna be almost more summerish than normal. But we wanna make a note that it's not our normal third Saturday. The committee's working on making another great festival, looking for volunteers. We will generate street merchant notices soon to try to get them to jump in as much as they can. Please contact me or anybody here in the village to volunteer and we'll get you on our meeting list. And then we already did the garbage report. So I think I'm done talking for a while. Mr. Trustee Trap, you wanna enter in?
Oh, you bet. Well, I'd just like to start by talking about the, uh, Dutchess County Planning Federation and the classes for our Dutchess County Planning and Zoning Boards and any other county that wants to jump into the fray here. Uh, we have our classes, our three sets of classes, uh, set up and ready March thirty-one, which is a Tuesday. We're gonna have floodplain regulations for local boards. And, uh, the second class of that night will be skills that make, uh, great board members. This one came up as a result of, uh, new board members discussing the fact that they felt uncomfortable about speaking because one member was so, so strong in their opinions. They were nervous about trying to express themselves, so we found a class that addressed that sort of thing. So I think this would be interesting for those who would venture out to Millbrook. And Thursday, April thirtieth, we have, uh, this is a reschedule. Ken Carney and some friends are gonna do the ins and outs of affordable housing. And Wednesday, June third, uh, this is five G wireless revolution, pointers and pitfalls for land use boards. So should be interesting, some stuff going on there. And as usual, the classes are five bucks. We feed you, you get your learning credits. And, uh, a good time is had by all, so. Uh, planning and zoning report, uh, three building permits were issued. Uh, no certificates of occupancy were issued. One certificate of compliance was issued. Uh, four municipal searches were, were conducted. Two orders of remedy were, uh, were tendered. Uh, no stop work orders, no court appearances, and a number of fire inspections. I think I counted here about nine of them. Uh, there was one complaint on East Market Street and it was addressed and closed out. Uh, the planning board, uh, January ninth, uh, had a minor subdivision located at seventy-four sixty-eight and seventy-four sixty South Broadway. And, um, it's, uh, tabled until February thirteenth. Zoning Board of Appeals, January twenty-third, had a variance application for property at twenty-four Prince Street. And it was tabled till February twenty-seventh meeting. And, uh, the money taken in, uh, with the, uh, Village of Red Hook Building Department was a nice total, twenty-nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. There was a lot of money from the fire inspections to try and keep everybody safe out there. A few building permits and we're moving along pretty good. Brent and I and Ray are cranking it up every Friday afternoon. And you think it's not difficult to, heading into a weekend, grinding away till six o'clock or so on Friday.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it, uh, it's, it's a testament to our willpower.
Thank you, yes. I bolt out at four and they roll in and bang. So, thank you, Jay. Yeah, one thing, I was reading that Planning Federation training session that, um, five G, cause I know one or two people wandered into my office recently. I think there's a lot of disinformation, um, incorrect scientific information about five G, what it really is, and people are somewhat concerned, so I think it's good if our planning board or different folks could get up to speed. It's really just a different spectrum of the radio frequency. It's not up into the different emitting levels of radiation, you know, different.
You don't have to wear the foil.
Yeah, so it's, uh, I think the more people we can get to know, cause, um, Verizon is not really too present in our village, but I think, I don't know who else is leading the way with.
It's coming, this, this came as a result of some people a little farther south here. You know, Poughkeepsie, Fishville, Wapengers, things like that, where it's a little more, uh,
Population.
Development, a little more population and, and they're, they're doing some interesting things, so.
Yeah, good, thank you. Looks like we could move to water and then we'll head to Deputy Mayor Kowalczak and his big list, but Mr. Lang, are you ready?
Still laying on his shortlist. Yes, so during the month of January, the water treatment facility treated seven million, four hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred total gallons, which is an average of two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred gallons a day, which basically takes us back up to usage, uh, demand levels in the middle of the summer, which is a little bit of a surprise, quite frankly, so we are going to look into that and see if there's a leak or some issue with the system, because that's really not what we would expect. We sent out three samples for bacteriological testing in the month of January and they all came back, uh, clean, so that's excellent. And then the water treatment plant used fifty gallons of sodium hypochlorate, uh, in treating the water during the month. And that was an average daily use of one point six one gallons per day. So, uh, otherwise, I mean, we have a, a number of outstanding metering issues. And then the, the daily usage report, you know, reflects that elevated level that we're looking into.
Thanks, Charlie. Yeah, it's interesting, if you look at that daily chart there, not the graph, but the one on page three. They all seem relatively consistent in that two forty range. It's not like we're at the one eighty, then we burst seam and go up. So like Charlie was suggesting, we did reach out to our operator. Um, I'm asking them, remember we saw years ago, the production, we could get a graph off the elevated tower fill and drop rates? And we had that sawtooth, which just made us think fills, discharges. We think now we should see it retaining water, so we'll see what, they can build that, that graph again for us and, uh, but nobody's reported a break anywhere. I was talking to Charlie, New York City made the news with a break of breaks what, two days ago? Charlie works for DEP. On Broadway somewhere, when they get a break, man, it's like an eighteen-inch main with a, you lose like people in buildings, it looks like, down there. And I don't know how the guys, they must get the valves off quickly and get, get things shut down so they can get in, but. We don't think we have anything like that, but nobody's reported it. So why'd we go from the one eighty to two forty per day? I don't know. Anybody see any mystery water trucks in the village?
Of people siphoning off our, our sweet village water?
I'm only joking, but, uh, it just didn't, it's hard to sync up what's going on there, but, thank you, Charlie. And let's see, we now have Deputy Mayor Kowalczak with his various reports. Are you ready?
Yes, sir. Now, start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, we have two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents shade tree contractual, one thousand, five hundred. And our checking account, as mentioned in our Treasuries Report, is four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. There were no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of January. And anyone interested in having a tree planted on there right of way or for volunteering for planting days or making a donation to the Village Greens, community beautification projects, may contact David Pearson, Village Clerk or myself. The Village Highway Department monthly report, the Village's snow ordinance is, I thought we were kind of clear, clear of snow until this morning, but. The Village's snow ordinance is currently in effect through March thirty-first. No parking is permitted on village streets from eleven PM to six AM and on New York State highways from two AM to six AM during the same period. When snow or ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies. And costs associated with vehicle towing, towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And the owner and or occupant of every building and lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within twenty-four hours of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Village Highway Department may remove snow and ice left uncleared at a cost of two dollars per linear foot. And this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy, levy. Um, for this month, there were no revenue from the sale of scrap metal. Um, total revenue generated for this fiscal year is one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Since we began this program in two thousand and seven, thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Materials Management Departments. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Highway Department at seven five eight, eight six hundred, or the Village Clerk's Office. And our personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Intermunicipal Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report. Wish we had some good news. We were anticipating some, so we'll go through that. The Red Hook Sewer Project, we had meetings on January third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth and thirty-first in the Red Hook Village Building. We reviewed the comments from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation regarding the discrepancy between the maximum discharge from the treatment plant listed on the SECCER NEG deck approved by the village and the New York State DEC Speedy's permit application. The Village Trustees approved Resolution Number Three of twenty-twenty on January sixteenth, amending the maximum discharge from thirty-five thousand gallons to fifty thousand gallons, fifty thousand gallons. And that discrepancy had to do with, um, we wanted to build in a little bit more reserve capacity and anticipate more uses for the sewer system. And the Village Clerk provided copies to the mayor, all involved interested agencies and to the environmental notice bulletin for publication. And we reviewed comments from Dutchess County Department of Health of December fifth, December eleventh and January third. And CT Mail responded on, on, the last one was actually last Friday, the eighth of two, twenty-twenty. CT Mail associate, associates forwarded a response letter, revised plan. CT Mail associate, associates forwarded a response letter, revised plan sheets, revised technical specs, and revised basis of design report. Final comments from the DOH are forthcoming, we're expecting to have final sign-off this week sometime from DOH. We also reviewed procedures and status of the imminent domain proceedings, and all property owners who did not voluntarily submit signed easements to the Village Red Hook, of Red Hook have been served. Responses to initial offerings were due on January sixth, responses were not received, and these cases are being reviewed by three Dutchess County Supreme Court Judges. A meeting with one of the property owners and counsel was held on January twenty-fourth. A settlement to relocate a portion of the proposed main was agreed to. Revised easement documents will be submitted to the property owner, and this action will be resolved. A settlement conference will be held on January twenty-eighth with another property owner to seek an agreement and settlement. The Village of Red Hook received a response from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on January thirty-first notifying the village that the application for a DEC permit is complete and a technical review has commended, commenced. The notice of complete application for the State Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or as we call it, Speedies Permit, is for the proposed transfer and modification of the Red Hook Commons Treatment Facility. The notice has been published in the Poughkeepsie Journal and not Daily Freeman, as directed by the DEC. And the New York, and the DEC Environmental Notice Bulletin, this, this was done already, right? This was published this week? Comments regarding the application must be submitted to the DEC no later than March sixth or thirty days after the publication date, whichever is later. Once the DEC review the comments, final approval of the application will be granted. Um, the conference call with the Department of Health was conducted on January twenty-first, and we reviewed the village's, uh, January twentieth submission. A few comments were made, and again, we're anticipating this week to have final approval from the Dutchess County Department of Health. The Route Nine Old Farm Road Water Main Loop Project meeting was held on January thirteenth, and we reviewed the agreement between the Village of Red Hook, uh, for the sale of water to the Red Hook Land Corporation. We reviewed comments from the Dutchess County DOH and the LFC group comments of August twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Property owners will follow up with the DOH for a notification of final approval. And for those who don't know, this water loop project will connect dead-end water mains to provide more efficient, safe, and easily maintained water distribution services to properties along Old Farm Road and South Broadway, um, those properties north of MNT Bank. The costs associated with the project, including engineering services and construction, will be paid by the private property owners benefiting from village water connections, and the costs for permitting and construction oversight by Red Hook Village Engineers will be paid by the Village of Red Hook. Um, the Village of Red Hook Distribution System Administrative Service, Services Improvement, we gotta work on this.
Like that word up, holy grail.
Meetings were held on January third, tenth, seventeenth, and thirty-first with Delaware Engineering, who's our village engineer, and they're, they're proposing to conduct an on-street survey to locate all fire hydrants serving the village water system and develop hydrant flushing and valve exercising schedule. A new cell read meter head transceiver has been received by the village, and newly installed cell read water meters can now be read with this equipment. We discuss meter endpoint updates and previous meter readings for replaced meters and list of qualified water uses being billed at the senior rate as we'll head into a public hearing at some future date. The Red Hook Crosswalk Signal Device Project, we have, as you know, we have four mid-block crosswalks, three on South Broadway, one on West Market Street. Um, a correspondence from the New York State DOT was received by the village on January twenty-first. Two solar-powered, push-button-activated crosswalk signal devices are RRFB, which are rapid.
Rectangular rapid flashing beacons or something.
They're pretty cool, they just flash. These devices will be installed at mid-block crosswalks on South Market and Morgan's Way, which is by Red Hook Commons and the Emporium, and on West Market and Benner Road. Funding provided by the New York State DOT Fast Grant Program. And we got this award in, what, November fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, so not, not real fast. On the task force side, both Charlie and I represent the village. Meetings were held on January third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth in the Red Hook Town Hall. We are currently discussing proposed amendments to the Town of Red Hook zoning law to permit short-term rentals or STRs in certain town zoning districts. We also discussed proposed amendments and discussed operations, neighbor reactions, and income produced, Airbnb regulations, guest host review with property owners currently operating an SDR in the Town of Red Hook. Meetings with property owners were conducted on January seventeenth and January twenty-fourth in the Red Hook Town Hall, and these, these zoning amendments pertain only to the Town of Red Hook. Some of the other committees I serve on, there were no meetings of the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee and the Community Preservation Fund, and also the Salt Hill Watershed Community. Going back to the Community Preservation Fund, the current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of January thirty-first is one-million-five-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Fair hunk of change. The Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee meeting was held on January third. Our annual Northern Dutchess Alliance Breakfast and Awards Program will be held on February twenty-sixth at the Beekman Arms in Reinbeck, New York. I believe it starts at seven to nine, seven or seven-thirty? It's a good place to do a lot of networking and whatever. We also discussed the award nominees for the Charlie and Arcores Award and the Commitment to Community Award. Jim Levy of Planning for Places will be the featured speaker. His talk will focus on the Northern Dutchess Alliance's study of short-term rentals in the Northern Dutchess area. We also discussed short-term rental issues in the Northern Dutchess area, including defining the goals and objectives of the current and future studies. We discussed correlations between SDRs and the Northern Dutchess Alliance's Blueprint for Economic Development, determining and reviewing what legislation or regulations have worked in other areas. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, or LWRP Working Group, meeting was held on January twenty-first at the Town Hall. The New York State Department of State found an eighteen thirteen document verifying that the western boundary of the Town of Red Hook is actually the central line of the Hudson River. We had, well, we had received information from the DOS that they, according to eighteen-twelve document, um, the central, or the, the boundary of the, um, Town of Red Hook, the western boundary was basically the high watermark, the shoreline. So this is pretty good. Um, we reviewed amendments to Section two F, which is recreation over space areas, and discussed amendments to Section three, which are waterfront revitalization program policies. The Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, Jay, myself, and Ray Tal both sit on there. Uh, a public hearing by the Village Board of Trustees was held tonight, actually. Resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of local law was held on the thirteenth, and a public hearing, again, was scheduled for tonight. And the Village Board of Trustees reviewed and amended the full draft environmental assessment form, we haven't done that yet, right? We'll be doing that at a later date. And the, the ZRC met on the seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first of January, and we reviewed and continued to review proposed amendments to Article Five, Section two-hundred-and-thirty-eight, which are signs and billboards or the supplemental regulations. Proposed amendments to Article Two, Section two-hundred-and-five definitions were also discussed. And that is it.
Well, thank you. Looks like we've gotten through department and committee reports. We can move to regular business, which will be a little more interesting, I think. The first bullet point I have is GBD zoning, next steps. Um, we did the public hearing, we closed the public hearing, we have a twenty-one-day written comment period still open. I would ask that the ZRC folks that are here, and we could communicate to Ray, you know, incorporate the comments we heard and see if, what we may or may not have to do. And then, since we closed the public hearing, we, I see no need to, to do another one, and we just have to work. I think Brent and Victoria touched on it, we have the Seeker and the two-thirty-nine M, certain things we have to do internally and externally, but we'll keep working on that. But thank you, ZRC. And then, I have in your packets a resolution, we've touched on it the past few meetings, um, I've titled it here, New York Conference of Mayors, Criminal Justice Rules. We had reached out after January first, we, we received pressure and info from our police department and other law enforcement and courts, and we weigh it heavily and talk about it seriously, but the Conference of Mayors has put together some bullet points, which we read at our last meeting, but they've asked that we consider sending an actual document in the form of a resolution to our elected officials ranging from Assembly to State Senate and so forth to get, uh, get some more pressure on folks. I don't think it's unreasonable, we're not coming from a super conservative standpoint, but there are ramifications that have already affected our department. Like I said, in your packets is the resolution. I'll just look at the highlighted bullet points, um, which are halfway down there. The Conference of Mayors is suggesting that all of us are in the same boat with this regard, whether we're a village or a bigger city or whatever, but they ask that the legislature and the governor ensure that cities and villages are provided with additional financial and operational support to offset the cost of these mandated measures. Um, and allow sixty days for prosecutors to disclose evidence to the defense for criminal charges. Right now, it's a fifteen-day rule, which is, we're feeling a lot of pressure. Um, we don't handle tons and tons of cases like a big muni, but we don't have tons and different levels of department staff to deal with it either. Another bullet point, point is to exclude from the accelerated discovery requirements any chain, any charge not involving a misdemeanor or felony. So I think that's getting to VNT type cases. Adjust the twenty-day arraignment requirement to accommodate local courts that meet on a monthly basis. We're already seeing this now, one reason, we were pushing our court to handle two sessions a month for some VNT overload situations, but now with fifteen-day rules and certain things, it's actually pushing, um, the courts to do more. This month, Jonah had to run two, what was it, last Tuesday, right, just two days ago? It's quite disruptive in the house as far as a lot more people coming through, and we are getting some benefit of it, meaning we are running our regular VNT through it, but at the same time, they're also doing it to run through some of the, the new demands with arraignment and so forth. So, um, so we have to pay a special prosecutor twice, we, certain things we were doing, and court security twice, and staff, more, more staff coverage time. So, um, that goes to the first bullet point, we need some help if we're gonna do this. Somebody should, should have thought about helping us finance it. We didn't budget for it last March, we didn't have any indication of what was coming. Um, the last bullet point is allow prosecutors to withhold sensitive information such as victim contact information without having to obtain a court order. Right now, it's the reverse, um, that, so they're saying, let's, let's reverse that, meaning if, don't disclose, disclose victim contact information automatically. Let's see, in the top of the text, there's a bunch of whereas's. I think we could go through them, some of them are, we all know from the other meetings, but, um, the one whereas, the, the third one down, discovery reforms mandate prosecutors disclose evidence to the defense within fifteen days of arraignment or criminal charges. Whereas drastically enlarging the scope of material that a prosecutor must review and deliver within fifteen days will overwhelm the ability of city and village officials and employees to prosecute cases while managing their misdemeanor and felony caseloads. We don't do any felony here in the village, of course, but, uh, it will make it impossible to prosecute vehicle and traffic and local code infractions and violations and compliance with the new discovery mandates. And that's the key thing for us, we use our court once in a while to enforce zoning infractions. It seems like our courts are being, as much as they're the lowest level justice courts in the state, they're being asked to augment state criminal justice, uh, court systems. I would ask that, we did circulate this, um, I think it'd be worth our while to give it a resolution number and approve it, um, and send it, you know, you did some communication without the formal resolution, but I think we, we could do this and send it off to our elected officials across the board. Anybody have any thought before we get too far into it?
I was just wondering, I assume other municipalities are signing onto something very similar?
Yeah, the Conference of Mayors circulated it to, we're a member of that.
Right.
So like I said, it's the big cities, the small cities, us villages, they're.
And town is excluded because mayors are from villages and cities?
Yeah, I think, I would assume they're getting, they're members of the association of towns, so I haven't.
They have their own tribe.
Yeah, it's a different affinity group or different lobbying group. But like, you know, the Conference of Mayors takes village and city-related issues into the legislature and lobbies on our behalf too, so they're just looking for a little more weight to, as legislatures back up there. And it doesn't really get to the, uh, there certainly was a need to reform aspects of the criminal justice statute and system, but pushing it back onto us at the low level here is, I think, the hard part for everybody. Have you had a chance to look it over? You good? So, do you have your number ringbook there? Essentially, the, the main whereas is, this is now therefore be resolved that the Village of Red Hook supports the following set of amendments proposed by New York State Conference of Mayors that are consistent with the intent of the criminal justice reforms, but which allow for more effective and affordable implementation. And those are the one, two, three, four, five bullet points that are on the page and that I read out loud. So I would move that we adopt Resolution Forward and enable us to lend some voice to the argument in Albany to modify the current criminal justice statute, uh, that passed here in two thousand and nineteen and affected us immediately. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Online payment talks, we talk about this and we're moving further ahead. You all know we use software consultants based here in Red Hook, and they sold to a company more down in the mid-south somewhere recently, um, and they are affiliated now through the mother company with this company called VPS that will enable, uh, online payments of our water bills or tax bills, and, uh, but we're primarily looking at the water bill side. So we are underway trying to get it all to happen, it'd be nice if we could do it. I don't think it'll happen by our March cycle, but maybe by June, but it's been shown to me and clearly can, the customer from home makes the willful decision to pay the extra fee, which is two to three dollars on top, we don't have to incur it or pay the vendor, and then they log in and they get in all the details necessary, and it does behind closed doors, it's a back office transaction where it actually makes the credits right on the software consulting program, and then builds a tally every day that shows how many accounts were paid overnight, and our financial staff would get that report and say, okay, forty-two people paid and it's five-thousand-four-hundred dollars. And then they get a report, and in forty-eight hours, the money is in our account in Key Bank. So it happens all, and I'm hoping it'll knock back some front office transaction time. Now, how many people jump in and buy into it? Who can say? But I don't see any reason not to do it. We have to, um, keep moving, they, they send big detailed, I'll call them contracts, you know, we're, we have the lawyers looking at it, but we're working on that to get that, that going ahead. Kind of a segue, Water Department slash Sewer Admin Options, we've been kicking around informally and one-on-ones and so forth, but as you all know, the Water Department is about a five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar-a-year budget. We move and administer that in billing and receipts, and then we spend not all that in repairs and upgrades and maintenance. And then pretty soon, we'll be owning and operating Sewer's Treatment Plant, because like you know, for us to get our project going, we're taking ownership of the, the Red Hook Commons existing sewer treatment plant, so we'll have to hire an operator. And right now, we still have, in my opinion, a little shortfall, we have staff doing a lot of day-to-day office operations, but we have a water operator and. and we're gonna need a sewer operator. We still need, I think, some sort of overseeing entity, some sort of person, company. We use VRI now for water ops, but it's still, I think, it's not a criticism of them, but it's, they do what they have to do when we ask them to do it, and that's the nature of the contract. We could probably pay more, but, um, we, I think we're looking for a solution that we don't really know exactly what the final option could be. I'm gonna meet with some folks, we're gonna do a couple of meetings and just see, but if you could all, I know we're all brainstorming a little bit, but we have the existing water code, we have highway guys that do some work, we have staff that do some work, and we're looking for that central command center point where there's an administrator. And when the sewer comes online, it's gonna be, what, another couple hundred thousand dollars in cash flow and budget and monitoring and repairs and different things that we're gonna need to be on top of. So if you, in your travels, when you see villages like us, if anybody's got the right solution, you know, what we have now works, but it's not the greatest, so we'd have to work on it. Just a reminder, our next workshop will be the twentieth, and, um, that'll be our first budget session where we have those timelines and deadlines to get the budget going for the next fiscal year. And just for the audience and all of us, again, the New York State tax law, tax cap law applies now. Odd infinitum, it was passed, it's final and forever, so we'll always face this, but, um, the cap this year is one point seven eight percent. So a reminder to the board members, we'll start those a week from Thursday. Lucky us upstairs, February twentieth. I think we can forego executive session. We always put it in case we need it. I did want to add one thing, it's not on yours, SRO contract, I mentioned it before when I was doing the police report, but we did get versions. Council has looked at it, and then, um, we sent back for some corrections. Originally, the school, uh, was only keeping it, they were modifying it to, to go, what we're doing is, we're giving them a bit more hours per day, so we wanted to get that into the contract. Essentially, it's the entire school day instead of just parts of the school day now, which is good for us, as I say, because we bill them at an hourly rate, and, uh, we, we have to consider that for our budget. And we'll, of course, get more revenue out of that, too, so. But what I want to do before we sign it, and they did comply, we wanted to make it go through effective next June thirty, twenty twenty-one, just to be consistent with our fiscal year. They did agree to that. So like I said, council's looked at it. Essentially, we're promising them a certified school resource officer and, um, and list out how the two entities interact and how it's really a police and school professional relationship. It's very detailed, but it'll go through June thirty, twenty twenty-one. There's a, a revenue aspect to us, and I believe it's in your packets there. So as I mentioned, I went over it, the sergeant went over it, council went over it. It's really a continuation with some modifications, essentially adding some more time and extending the length out. And it helps define the roles of security personnel and law enforcement, school-wise versus law enforcement-wise. The way I have, the way it's configured is essentially, we're there, but we're low-key and we're, we get to deal with the law enforcement issues that arise, but the school administers their day-to-day school policies, and we're, we're there as support if needed. Anyway, I think it's worthwhile to continue it from a lot of levels, school safety, fiscal performance for our village, and, uh, we're right here with good staff and certified staff. So I recommend that we sign it, but just since it's a relatively big deal, like the board can defer. So I'm making the formal motion that, um, the Village of Red Hook sign another SRO. And I'll be frank, it's affiliated services, too. We do like some security, basketball games and sports events, different things, that's included in here. What we do is, you recall from our budget talks, we have revenue lines for each of those aspects. But anyway, I'd move that we renew and adopt the new school SRO and school security agreement in front of us, uh, which is to be effective February twelve, twenty twenty, through June thirty, twenty twenty-one. It's on paragraph eighteen, so, so a move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, discussion?
Uh, on number thirteen, the fifty dollar per hour, is that a break-even number for us?
Yeah, yeah, it is. We, it, no officer, um, that's our analysis of what we, that's not, um, that's not our, um, direct salary cost per SRO person. It's, there's, it includes, we'll call it the indirect costs, you know, management, car, um, benefits, different things that are on top, so. All right, any other questions or discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there a second on that?
I think so.
I believe you did.
I, I thought I heard one.
It's getting late, don't worry about it, Brandon, it's okay.
I have hit the items on our agenda. We have, of course, anything from the board that wants to be added or discussed or thrown into the mix. Then, of course, we would go to the public. George has nothing, Mr. Kimball. We have the vouchers, I think they moved up and down the table, so we need to authorize payment of bills. I move that we pay bills after the audit. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And then, um, Mr. Kay?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Okay. Now, somebody said second, I heard, did it come from you? All favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.